Uno, dos, tres, uno. Uno, dos, tres, uno, dos.
Hermoso cariño. Hermoso cariño. Dios no ha dado más amor a mí. Precioso regalo. Precioso regalo. El cielo ha llegado y me ha formado de dicha y amor. Hermoso cariño. Hermoso cariño. Estoy loco y yo con nuevo pie de canto en mi. No puedo evitarlo. Ni quiero evitarlo. Hermoso cariño que Dios ha dado jamás para mí. Hermoso cariño. Hermoso cariño. Estoy loco y yo con nuevo pie de canto en mi. No puedo evitarlo. Ni quiero evitarlo. Hermoso cariño que Dios ha dado jamás para mí.
Vamos a seguir con los mariachis para la gente cumpliendo años esta hermosa noche de jueves. Qué bonito. Los mariachis trallanos.
Te lindas a la mañana. Es que vengo a saludarle. Por ese día de santo me gustó la fe de Dios. La vida de Juanito. Cantaron las melodías. Los señores. A ver el día amaneciendo y a la luz del día lo arrojo. Hoy por ese dolor de años queremos a cantar. Sigue. Olar un cuatro palomas por toda la ciudad. Por ese día de tu santo deseamos felicidades. En las estrellas del cielo quisiera apagar el dedo. Una es para saludarte y la otra para decirte adiós. Las milles y flores este día voy a orar. Hoy por ese día de tu santo queremos a cantar.
Wow, chancé.
Uno, dos, tres, cuatro, uno.
Oh, es mío, es mío, es mío. Por la verdad, y la. Les sentí los besos muy bien. Nos salieron unos rasgos de guía. Les platiqué que me encontré con robo. Y en sus brazos fui dedicando de quererte. Que te corresto desde el día de tu nacimiento. Y que hay momentos que deseas a tu hermano. Con tremor. Quiero que sepas que. No dejas de hablar. Ay, admitiste soledad. Ni andaba a aceptar salir corriendo y preguntar. Eso es lo que ha sido de tu vida. Con tremor. Siempre te voy a. Mi lápiz y amistad. No queda más que confesar. Que ya no puedo soportar que estoy odiando, se odiar. Porque eres yo por reina. Y el abril. No cabe duda que siempre dolor se acaba. Amor. Quiero que sepas que. No dejas de hablar. Ay, admitiste soledad. Ni andaba a aceptar salir corriendo y preguntar. Eso es lo que ha sido de tu vida. De no. Siempre te voy a. Mi lápiz y amistad. No queda más que confesar. Que ya no puedo soportar que estoy odiando, se odiar. Porque eres yo por reina.
Wow. Awesome. You got it hard. That was good.
They're gonna do.
Mariachi Trallanos.
Thank you guys, that's awesome.
Is this it? I'm waiting for Jesse. Jesse?
You're good.
I'm so sorry for that silence. We have to make sure that the TV is recording as we do this. But I just wanted to, nothing takes me back to my childhood than hearing mariachis. Growing up in San Antonio, this was, you would hear it every celebration for anything, school assemblies. So just, I really want to extend just a heartfelt thank you to the University High School Mariachi Trallanos for the outstanding performance and to their talented director, Mr. Archie Lee Hatton IV. Thank you so much for your exceptional leadership and dedication. I think the first time that I saw the mariachis come, it was a couple of students and it's grown every year. So I'm just so excited for this program and you guys did such a great job. So thank you so much for coming and we really appreciate it.
And what's the saying, once a Trojan. There you go.
Great. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and call this board meeting to order. Are they gonna do another song? Okay, gonna go ahead and call this regular Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may discuss or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. Really want to extend a warm welcome to everyone present, everyone who got to hear these talented musicians and to our television viewers. The board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. And I would just ask if you would please turn off your cell phones to silent if you have not already done so. And we really do appreciate the time that you have taken to join us and for your interest in Waco ISD. Este junta regular de Waco ISD está convocada. Les extiendo un amable bienvenidos a todos los que están presente y los que nos observan por televisión. También les quiero compartir que todos las conferencias, excuse me, está disponible la página Waco ISD YouTube el lunes después de la conferencia. En esa página pueden escoger su idioma así toda la información que se fue discutida está disponible para todos. Por favor, apájar su teléfono celular. Les agradecimos el tiempo que compartir con nosotros y su interés en Waco ISD. As the Waco ISD Board of Trustees, we are held to ethical standards once we take office. One of those standards is student-centered focus. So we, as the Board of Trustees, will be continuously guided by what is best for all students of the district. Thank you so much. We're gonna move on to item number two, public comments. Do we have anyone signed up? Okay, perfect. Are we gonna let them stay up there? The reason we're gonna have them say, stay up here is because they're gonna sing another song for us a little bit later. So, thank you for bearing with us. And we're gonna go ahead and pause right now, take time for prayer, contemplation, reflection, and/or meditation. Thank you. Moving on to the pledge leaders.
And tonight's pledge leaders are Leslie Antonio and Jaden Karanko of Bells Hill Elementary School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you pledge leaders. The board would meet me down in front of the dais.
We appreciate our pledge leaders and invite them to meet our trustees this evening. We're gonna begin with Leslie Antonio. Leslie is in the fourth grade. Her favorite subject is science. She enjoys reading, playing soccer, and spending time with her sister and her dog Lola. When she grows up, Leslie plans to become a teacher and work right here in Waco ISD. Leslie is the daughter of Salvador and Maria Antonio. Thank you, Ms. Leslie. Our pledge leader tonight is Jaden Karanko. He's a fifth grader and his favorite subject is math. He enjoys playing Fortnite and soccer. When he grows up, he plans to become a professional soccer player. Jaden is the son of Juan and Samantha Karanko. And thank you to Principal Kristy Ingram for being here tonight to support her students. And trustees, if we could please have you return to the dais, thank you very much. And I said it to you earlier this evening, but happy school board recognition month.
Vidonyas are all over it.
January is Texas School Board Appreciation Month and this year's state theme, Leadership for Tomorrow's Texas, is fitting for the work that our trustees do through their selfless service. Trustees, we begin our appreciation of your service tonight with a special musical selection from the University High Troy Hano's instructed by headband director Archie Hatton IV.
Los ojos y los labios. La mirada nos abre. Y en regalos continúan. Y si no le das. Desde hace tiempo ya no lo he sabido. Por en la misma y me trae. Que pidas te voy a jurar. Cuanto te quise y te quiero todo día. Adiós amor, me voy de ti y esta vez para siempre. Eres y marcha atrás porque sería pata. Adiós amor, me voy de ti, el amor de tu vida. Te deje sola vez que no sé qué. No me voy a perderte, pero si me lo olvidaste, porque me fallaste.
Hey, nos damos por bien. Sí, se rato.
Desde hace tiempo ya no lo he sabido. Por en la misma y me trae. Que pidas te voy a jurar. Cuanto te quise y te quiero todo día. Adiós amor, me voy de ti y esta vez para siempre. Eres y marcha atrás porque sería pata. Adiós amor, me voy de ti, el amor de tu vida. Te deje sola vez que no sé qué. No me voy a perderte, pero si me lo olvidaste, porque me fallaste. Porque me fallaste. Porque me fallaste.
A huge thank you to our University High School Mariachi Band, the Troy Hano's. You are always such a pleasure to listen to and we are grateful to have you keep, have you keep our Hispanic heritage alive. We have enjoyed having you tonight. And trustees, they would just like to come in front of the dais and thank you for your service. Okay. Another round of applause for our University High School Troy Hano's.
They have their own mic. They have their own mic. That was fantastic, man. That was fantastic. Love it. Love it, love it. Dude, great singing. That's fantastic. Love it. Thank you so much. Good playing, man. That's great. Congratulations. This is awesome. Good job, buddy. Fantastic. Thank you so much. Thank you, man. Appreciate it. So glad you played for us. Thank you so much. This is fantastic. Thank you. Fantastic. Dude, you killed it. Your voice has already changed. That was awesome. Dude, killed it. Loved it. Hit the high notes. Thanks, man. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thanks, Archie, man. It's fantastic.
Thank you again, trustees. The public may or may not be aware that our school board members serve without compensation, unlike city council members and some other elected officials. These trustees sitting before you tonight serve because they truly care about our students and staff. Our superintendent, student advisory council members from our middle schools and high schools will be making our presentations to our Board of Trustees this evening. Trustees, when I call your name, please come individually in front of the dais. Stephanie Cordewig, school board president. Stephanie Cordewig is our school board president and represents District Two. President Cordewig is in her 10th year of service as a trustee in Waco ISD. Now that deserves a round of applause. That's a decade. As an educator herself, President Cordewig has remained connected to her roots as a classroom teacher. This perspective allows her to view things through an educator's lens with a focus on how a decision will affect teachers and students. Trustee Cordewig is a steadfast advocate for listening to and engaging the community in her leadership has helped us move important 2021 bond projects forward. Isaiah Tavera of Waco High School and Alexandria Hatton of University High School are presenting President Cordewig with her gifts of appreciation from our campuses and our district. Thank you so much, President Cordewig. We appreciate you. And next, we'd like to show our appreciation to Jose Vidonya, our school board vice president. Mr. Vidonya serves as our vice president representing District Three and is in his sixth year of service to Waco ISD. Vice President Vidonya is extremely active in the community and a strong advocate for our students. He and his family never miss a chance to support Waco ISD students and staff at various school events and performances. As a university high school graduate and now parent, he continues to be one of the Trojans' biggest fans. University High School students Ricardo Gonzalez and Stephanie Rodriguez are presenting Vice President Vidonya with his gifts of appreciation from the campuses and the district. Thank you so much, Vice President Jose Vidonya. We appreciate you. We now like to show our appreciation to school board secretary, Mr. Jeremy Davis. Mr. Davis represents District One and is his fourth year of service on the board and currently serves as our board secretary. He is an avid supporter of Waco's youth. In addition to serving on the board, trustee Davis is the founder of Mentor Waco, where he works to assist students in academic achievement and improved behavior. He cares about our kids and is a true advocate for the student voice and education. Joanie Bronner and Eli Santos of Lake Air Montessori Middle School are presenting Secretary Davis with his gifts of appreciation from the campuses and the district. Thank you so much, trustee Davis. We appreciate you. Jonathan Grant, trustee District Four, please come down. Mr. Grant is in his third year of service and represents District Four on the school board. With experience as a small business owner and minister, he understands the importance of relationships. Grant is a devoted Baylor Bear alumnus, proud Waco ISD parent and is extremely passionate about improving outcomes for all of our students. Having served on various boards and committees, he embodies what it means to be a true servant leader. From Waco High School, Terrence Johnson and Karimé Reyes present him with his gifts of appreciation from the campuses and the district. Please help us show appreciation to Jim Patton, trustee of District Five. Mr. Patton is in his second year of service and has been a great asset to Waco ISD. Trustee Patton currently serves on the Waco ISD Education Foundation Board and was previously an educator and campus leader in Waco ISD. He is a proud supporter who values staff and understands the role our district plays in ensuring Waco is a great place. in ensuring Waco is a great place to work and learn. Hey, Shug, tell me your name, please. Jaslyn Potts. Thank you, Ms. Potts. And now we would like to recognize trustee Angela Ochoa. Mr. Ochoa is a trustee at large and he's in his third year of service as a Waco ISD school board member. Mr. Ochoa brings his financial expertise as an investment advisor to the team. A former educator, Ochoa was recognized as a university high school teacher of the year. He comes from a long line of educators and is proudly married to one. And he is able to view all things from unique and important perspectives that serve our district well. Presenting Mr. Ochoa with his gifts tonight is Isaiah Tavera of Waco High School and Alexandria Hatton of University High School. Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. We appreciate you. And last but by no means least, this guy's on fire. Please welcome Keith Gillory. Mr. Gillory is a trustee at large and in his fourth year of service as a school board member. As a deputy fire marshal, board member, and parent, he serves the community while wearing many different hats. A caring neighbor, he is also the founder of Tell the World Ministries, Literacy Intervention Team Waco, and the Forever Young Scholarship, which is dedicated to breaking the silence against domestic violence. Presenting his gifts tonight, our University High School students Ricardo Gonzalez and Stephanie Rodriguez. Mr. Gillory, we appreciate you. Thank you to all of our superintendent student advisory council members for making tonight extra special for our trustees. Trustees, we hope you know that we appreciate you all year long, not just tonight. And if we don't say it often enough, listen to what our students have to say about you.
What do Waco ISD school board members do?
I don't know. School members work. Think they're rich.
I think it is.
School board members help us, help us and support the school in many different ways.
They help support parents and students in their educational lives and help support us when we need their help.
They try to do what's best for schools, elementarys, middles, and high schools.
Oh, school members, they, they, they're a teacher, so they, they show things to the kids.
But I know they provide for our school and they help us with things that our school can't get.
They take care of the school's financial problems, like money and what to do to like instruct things around the school if it's broken or anything. They also, they also create the rules for like the school, making sure everything's in order.
But I really want to thank them for helping us build this new school that is really pretty. And if I can say it in Spanish, muchas gracias por darnos el dinero para tener esta escuela nueva.
Thank you for helping us grow stronger in our education.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So gracias, danke, merced, gracias, de qui, toda, chacra, tak, haval, mahalo, and all of the 34 languages that our Waco ISD students are speaking this year. Thank you for all you do for our students and staff. If we haven't made it clear yet, we appreciate you. Thank you. And you're getting your steps in tonight. I'm gonna ask you to come back down for a community partner. Prosper Waco is honored with the TASB Stand Up for Public Education Award as the January Waco ISD Community Partner of the Month. Since 2022, through generous support of the Gates Foundation, Prosper Waco has shared more than $400,000 with Waco ISD to help support efforts to recruit and retain high-quality classroom teachers. Over Prospect Waco's 10 years of existence, they've sought grant funding to contribute more than $1.4 million to Waco ISD. Supporting such work is placing college and career navigators on campuses and beyond. Receiving the Texas Association of School Boards Stand Up for Public Education Award is Prosper Waco CEO Jessica Addis and Jeremy Rhodes, Senior Director of Data and Research. And in the spirit of this partnership, CEO Addis now has a check presentation for Waco ISD.
Yes, so we are, you know, it'd be, thank you so much, Chairman Cordewig, trustees, Dr. Spicer, for having us here this evening. In the spirit of trustee appreciation, I just want to say thank you to all of you all for your willingness to serve and to lead our district, to hire exceptional superintendents who hire in turn exceptional administrators, who hire exceptional principals, who hire exceptional teachers, who do exceptional work every day in the classrooms of Waco ISD. So we're so grateful for all of you all and it's our pleasure to present to you all this fake check that has a real transfer of electronic funds to support the work to build high-quality teacher pipeline in Waco ISD. So thank you for all you are doing. Yes, yes.
Can y'all just not cash it till Friday?
The 31st after payday.
Congratulations Prosper Waco and thank you for your continued partnership with Waco ISD.
Well, that was nice to get a nice little check from Prosper Waco. You guys are welcome back next month, too, so. Yeah, so thankful. Love to get to see all the kids and just our community partners. Such a rich community and just so thankful for the good work that's happening here, so. Okay, moving on to item number five, superintendent's report. Dr. Spicer.
Yes, ma'am, President Cordewig. Attendance Boundaries Committee, we met for the third time last week to review draft high school maps and a bigger picture, a set of draft maps that incorporated all our elementary, middle, and high school plans. I'm so grateful for the staff, parents, and committee members who engaged in this work with us. Talking through the challenges and opportunities that adjusting attendance boundaries maps brings is heavy and important work. We have our next committee meeting on February 6th and we will then be moving to public hearings to engage our community further. For those trustees who were able to attend and listen, and I want to give you a chance to share any thoughts or takeaways you had from the last meeting, if anybody has anything to add. All right. Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Something.
Yes, sir.
It was a really, really, an active engagement. They, the community that has come together, every meeting has really worked hard and has really been, I feel very thoughtful in their approach and thoughtful in their problem solving. And we're trying to do the best that we can for this district.
Absolutely.
We appreciate the community supporting us.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Patton. Structured campus visits. Since we returned from break, I have been back on campuses completing my structured campus visits. These visits include me visiting three focus groups, a set of students, a set of staff, and a set of parents to listen and learn more about the campus and their experiences. It's been great getting to listen and learn more about our individual campus communities and their needs. While the staff and parents are amazing, I have to tell you that the kids are the ones that keep me on my toes. I have been quizzed on names, so I was at Crestview and they told me I could not leave until I told them all their names and how to memorize. So guess what? I memorized their names and we took a selfie and then they let me leave and have my parents show up next. They're also asking about giving more recess to fifth grade only because they're about to go to middle school, so please make that happen, Dr. Spicer. I've truly appreciated how much our students are aware of how important campus is and their schools. And so there's a lot of pride coming out and there's also given us a lot of feedback on things we can do better. So I can't wait to share that with you. I'll be synthesizing all this information along with additional data collected since October 15th with you in February at that board meeting. Students, Superintendent Student Advisory Committee, you guys got to see some of the students that I got a chance to meet with on yesterday and the day before. We have our two high school represented and then four middle schools. And so we got a chance to hear from them. And so in this meeting, they are able to tell us, so the first meeting we had, tell us about how they live school, what's going well, what's not going well. So we have work and we had feedback from schedules to food, to block scheduling, to you name it. They were kind of calling us on it. So I was like, okay, thank you. This is the work. But they were very appreciative because they got to share their voice. That's what they kept saying is thank you for listening, thank you for asking. And so we know, our team was there with me, we have to come back and we have to deliver some deliverables for them. And so they're very excited about that work. And then last but not least, we started 2025 with an important new addition to our team. Dr. Melissa King Knowles is a passion educator with 22 years of experience as a teacher, assistant principal, principal, and district level leader prior to joining us here in Waco Independent School District. While she has a proven track record for success with increasing academic performance at campus and district levels and is skilled with change management, what is most important is her unyielding passion to keep students at the heart of her work. In 2016, Dr. King Knowles was named Region Four's Assistant Principal of the Year and went on to receive the distinction of Assistant Principal of the Year for the state of Texas. She served on the Texas Association of Secondary School Principals Board of Directors for the last few years of her tenure as principal. Dr. King Knowles has published multiple works on school leadership and presents frequently at conferences at the state level. She completed her doctoral degree recently where she researched, her research focused on leadership development in public education. Her dissertation has been chosen to represent her university on the Carnegie Project for the Education Doctorate Repository and was also selected to be presented at the Texas Council of Professors, Professors of Educational Administration Conference next week. I'm excited to formally welcome our, our new deputy superintendent, Dr. Melissa King Knowles. Please give her hand as she comes.
I want to make sure that the mic is not right in my face. President Cordewig, Superintendent Spicer, and trustees, esteemed trustees, I am honored to be joining the leadership team here in Waco ISD. It has been clear from the onset what a special place it is this evening. I'm honored to stand before you as deputy superintendent. I know we are united and sharing a common mission to ensure that every student in Waco ISD receives a quality education and the support they need to thrive both inside and outside of the classroom. I am committed to working collaboratively with each of you to uphold values of equity, excellence, and accountability in all that we do. Together, I believe we can continue to make Waco ISD a place where all students are empowered to reach their fullest potential and inspire to develop a love for learning that serves them well beyond the years that they are with us. I have been shaped by numerous educators and educational leaders who have guided me and mentored me over the years, and this includes my mother, who although she couldn't be here tonight, cheers me on regardless. She was the first teacher who modeled for me what it means to care for the whole child and to never, ever give up on our students. I would also be remiss if I didn't recognize my amazing husband who has joined me here this evening. This June, we will be celebrating 23 years together and he's my rock, my safe harbor in any storm, and my biggest champion. He inspires me to be the very best each and every day so that I can do that for Waco ISD and for our children. Thank you, Kelly. Thank you for encouraging me. I love you. My life's calling is to pour back into public education what has been provided for me and I am excited to be able to be alongside the best, the very best of the best here in Waco ISD. Thank you all again for your time this evening and for your dedication and service to this community. I look forward to working with you all now and in the future.
We, we're gonna come down and we're gonna shake your hand, but I just wanted to say publicly, we're so glad that you guys are here and thank you so much for choosing Waco to be, to be a home. I think you're, you're right. This is an amazing community and there's some amazing people in this district and our kids are phenomenal. So we're so excited to have you guys here. Okay, here we go. I guess that is it for superintendent's report. Thank you so much, Dr. Spicer. Moving on to item number six, information items and reports. Is there anything you would like to discuss, Mr. Grant? Anything I have to discuss, Mr. Davis?
No.
Anything you'd like to discuss, Mr. Vedonja? Anything you'd like to discuss, Mr. Gillory?
No.
Anything you'd like to discuss, Mr. Ochoa? Anything you would like to discuss, Mr. Patton?
No, ma'am.
Okay, moving on, consent agenda. Is there anything that you would like pulled, Mr. Grant?
No.
Thank you. Is there anything you would like pulled, Mr. Davis?
No.
Anything you'd like pulled, Mr. Vedonja?
Just 7H.
7H. Okay, we're gonna pull 7H. Okay, we're going to poll 7H, 7E. Is there anything, oh, recuse. Okay. Is there anything that you would like polled, Mr. Ochoa?
Nope.
Is there anything you would like polled, Mr. Patton? Mr. Guillory told me that he's going to recuse himself.
I would like to poll 7G.
7G, okay. So I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented except for 7E, 7H, and 7G. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. As a first. Second, Mr. Patton, any discussion, Mr. Grant? Any discussion, Mr. Davis? Any discussion, Mr. Vedania?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Guillory?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa?
Nope.
Any discussion, Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, passes unanimously. Okay, so we're going to go down to 7G. Purchases in excess of 50,000 under pre-existing bid, purchase cooperative or allowed professional service. I don't know who is on that one.
That was me.
Okay, Mr. Patton, the question.
Yes, ma'am. I have a question about the $63,000 purchase from McGraw-Hill for instructional reading materials for pre-K through grade two of J.H. Hines.
Okay.
Good evening.
Yeah, good evening.
So, Dr. Cornblum, the, I, I really have two, two concerns. One, we're practically in February, and the per, request, the purchase request is in February rather than, say, August or September, when this could have been used all year long. 65,000 bucks for three and a half months. It's a little concerning. And then the, the second thing, I did a little research on this, and I know that this program has been in the past research-based and in the past had been considered best practices, but that had been several years ago. And I did a little, a little rabbit dive, and from Education Week, they talked about this program specifically that it has no discernible effects on reading comprehension and potentially negative effects on alphabetical, reading fluency, writing for students with learning disabilities. My, I guess, one, of course, any campus principal can ask for what they need, but do we not, have we not given hundreds of thousands of dollars through Ms. Parnell's office for tier instruction and for small group activities for when, have we not supplied that for all elementary campuses?
Yes, we have.
Have we not seen, for the campuses that are doing it with fidelity, doing those programs that the district has approved, are we not seeing growth?
We, we are seeing growth.
So my question is, too, why is this coming before some February? And two, why is this a program that in the past has been booted out of schools of ed, booted out of school districts for not serving kids with specific needs?
So let me address your first question. So when the administrator at this campus was hired, she asked if there were things that she could possibly do differently to close the gaps for her students. And at the time, my counterpart for leadership approved that, and...
I'm aware that at, at the time that this principal was hired, there were some, some things said. We were, we wanted, we want J.H. Hines to be successful. But understanding what may have been said or what may have been construed, no one in this district, from Dr. Kincanon down to a bus driver, has carte blanche to take money from the district for programs that are not best practice and in the face of the money that we have already provided. And I may be the only one that has this concern, guys, but we have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on, on programs for our kids. And if they're working in other schools, and possibly they aren't working at this school, maybe, maybe curriculum instruction can help, help them do better on it. I, my understanding is, the other elementary schools in our district, who are in jeopardy of scores, are making progress with the programs that you and your department have chosen and that the board has approved.
Correct. So this, as I said, this was in motion. So although it's in February for us, this specific administrator has had this ball in motion for a bit. It has taken them a bit of time to get it rolling. As far as the research base, it still is research-based because it does focus on phonics, phonemic awareness, vocabulary, fluency, all which align to reading comprehension, which are all aligned to the science of teaching reading. So it still is considered researched base. As far as, why not?
I'm sorry, it's not considered best practice, though, because it's not strong in problem-solving skills. Because what I've read, and I'm not going to argue with you because, Dina, you know so much more than me, and I just went down the rabbit hole with this. My concern is that it's not high-level thinking and the fact that some significant magazine articles from well-known educational institutions have deemed this program. So I'm sorry, and I won't interrupt you again, maybe.
It's, it, it is at the pre-K, K, and 1 level, so it's the foundational reading skills to support language development and reading comprehension. So that's what she's trying to focus on. And like I said, the ball's been rolling, although it feels like this is two school years in one. When all of that happened to back, when she was approved for that, it has taken them a bit of time. She did not have the funding for it. And we worked with her on some funding in different areas to free up some funding for some things, but then there was some funding found. And so she's trying to follow through on the approval that she was given in the beginning.
May I ask why this isn't through state comp or Title I?
Because if we gave money to that campus out of state, or out of state comp or Title I, we would be giving them a disproportionate share than what we give the other campuses. And we use our state comp and Title I funding to pay for the programs that we're using as a district in our systematic approach.
That is exactly what I'm getting at. If we have used state comp and title monies for programs for across the board, for district, for elementaries, for this specific type of thing, I, I have a concern accepting that we're going to do this program when we've already got good programs that will help. And for whatever reason, as you say, Dr. Cornblum, that it's taken a while to get the ball rolling. I believe that your department has been very supportive of these, these initiatives that are coming from admin. I just have a question and a concern about the $65,000 purchase for the next three months of school.
I hear you.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot or your department because I think you are doing a marvelous job. I think we've got the, we've got the programs in place that will do the job. I think that's what we should stick with, with fidelity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Does anyone else have a question?
I have a...
Yeah, Mr. Ochoa.
This may be kind of crossing topics here, but when we had the workshop last month, month before that, we, we talked about how curriculum was the same at every campus. So how would introducing something like this affect that?
It would be different there. And as I said, when...
Is that what we want, though? I mean, because we seem pretty sure that we wanted similar instruction on all campuses.
That's correct. So I, I think I go back to what was stated to this principal when she was hired, and that, that's where this process started.
That comment, that statement that you're alluding to was not made by Dr. Spicer nor the board, am I correct?
No, but as I said, the ball was roll, as I said, the school year feels like two school years, right? That almost seems like a lifetime ago, like, that didn't even happen, but that was still a part of this school year, and that principal started working on this during this school year with that approval before the transition.
I have a question on this. Is it possible for you all to get with the principal and put together something that's comparable to this or better? Can you, you know, through your department, and we can table this and come back to it?
If we were to make a change, I would suggest using the programs that we have in place.
Is that your recommendation?
Yes.
I agree.
I mean, if, if this is not approved, I would suggest using the programs that we have in place with fidelity.
Okay, so let's put this, let, let's, okay, so from my understanding, Dr. Cornblum, this is kind of on top of the curriculum that we have, very robust, I would say from the workshop, very robust curriculum that this district has put together. And this is being recommended by the principal specifically, correct?
This is a program that she's used in the past and seen success with and wanted to bring in. When she accepted the position, that was a part of that. So specifically where she's wanting to put it, so there's a piece that would go in pre-K all through interventions. It wouldn't, it's not replacing any core instruction. In pre-K, pre-K is considered the intervention, you know, I mean, really. But there is a piece that goes in pre-K, there's a piece that goes in, in Kinder, and then a piece that's in first. Now, our first graders on up through elementary have the tiered intervention right away. Kindergartners start that type of tiered intervention. Up until then, it's small group and different things in the classroom. They start that type of intervention in the spring, you know, where they have the opportunity to be polled and different things like that. But this P, that this program would be implemented in place of our current intervention through, part of it would be tier two in the classroom, and part of it would be tier three with the student intervention teachers.
Do we have material? I, my understanding, we have those materials already in place for...
Like, our systematic?
Yes, ma'am.
The district approach, yes.
So this is, is redundant.
From, from the information that you, you're giving us, I'm moved that we table this, allow you all to get with the principal, come up with a different plan, communicate with the principal, and we table this to further, you know, and, and look at it at a further date.
I, I'll, I'll agree with that. I, I just think, as, as Stephanie said, we, we have a lot of very robust curriculum. And when it comes to teaching phonics, and, and I could be completely wrong here, but I can't imagine there would be that big of a difference, or of all the curriculums that we've already purchased, something in there wouldn't fit that automatically. Now, if it's head and shoulders above the rest, I think we absolutely would all agree that we're going to do whatever's best for those kids to learn, but...
And then we would bring it to all schools.
Exactly. If we can find something within our own existing curriculum that's similar, that we could adjust to, I mean, it's a lot of money. It's a lot of money.
I think Ms. Davis is going to chime in.
No, can we just exclude that purchase?
That's what I'm texting Pete right now, is to see if I can approve, sorry, Pete. Can I, could we, I'm, I'm looking for the language of, how do we approve the amendments excluding the McGraw-Hill $63,000 purchase?
Purchase request.
That purchase request on this, they're wanting to exclude it. Or they're wanting to exclude it because it's tabled to be brought back at the next board meeting.
Do we, how, do we vote on tabling?
Okay, so what is happening?
I think the motion Mr. Guillory made was specific as to this item, this item.
To be tabled.
Talking about be tabled, I don't think he was referring to the item in total.
No, just the piece of...
Just piece.
So I think that's already...
I'll second if we need a second.
And then you still have the rest of that agenda.
To go through. Yes. For a tabled item, we just basically have to agree for a second, and it's done. We don't have to do the vote on that, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, everyone in favor?
We're going to table.
Hold on one second. Let's get this language in. Everyone in favor of tabling the McGraw-Hill $63,000 until the next board meeting? Yes, we've got a first, say aye.
Number 21, 1200.
Is the next board meeting enough time for you all to get with the principal, look at this and examine it?
I mean, school's going to be over if we don't decide something pretty soon, so yes.
We need to do it by the next board meeting.
My question is, is if we, we get this principal to align, right, to what we're doing, then do, and there is no $63,000 purchase, does it have to come back here? I mean...
It will not come back.
Okay.
It will be us doing the work.
Just doing the work, okay.
Okay, great.
Dr. Cornblum, I appreciate you answering my questions.
Okay, so all in favor of tabling the item, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I kind of oppose, actually, just to table it, but that's just me, the lone person. I know that it's going to be tabled. Okay, great. The, I will entertain a motion to accept the administration's recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve the purchase request over $50,000 as presented.
I do. I move.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there any discussion, Mr. Grant?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Davis? Any discussion, Mr. Vedania?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Guillory?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa?
Nope.
Any discussion, Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Moving on to item 7H. Mr. Vedania?
Yeah, I just wanted, I guess, more information on just what, like, how are we going to pick these students? Are, are they applying, or are we, they're applying the, with the internship with the city?
Oh, yeah, Dr. Cornblum, the City of Waco internship.
I actually don't know the criteria on that, and I'm sorry I didn't, I wasn't prepared to talk about this one. I didn't look into that. So I can find that out, though, for you and get that.
Put in the board update for two states.
Sure, yep. How they're selected for their internship?
Yes.
Okay.
I do think that this is a great program, though.
It is. It is.
Really excited about that. Mr. Vedania, do you have any other question?
That, that was one of my biggest...
Great. Okay, great. So I entertain a motion to accept administration recommendations approval interlocal agreement between City of Waco and Waco ISD for this Career and Technology Summer Internship Program as presented. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Vedania. Any discussion, Mr. Grant? Any discussion, Mr. Davis? Any discussion, Mr. Vedania?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Guillory?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa?
Nope.
Any discussion, Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Going back up to item 7E, this is bid award for maintenance supplies, equipment, and services. Mr. Guillory is going to go ahead and recuse himself from this item. I will entertain a motion, and I don't have that language in front of me. Let me pull it up. Better where, where is this? If anyone has 7E up. Thank you, services as presented. I will entertain a motion. Thank you, Mr. Grant. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Davis. Is there any discussion, Mr. Grant?
No.
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Davis? Any discussion, Mr. Vedanya?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa?
Nope.
Any discussion, Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes six with a recusal of Mr. Gillery. Oh, any opposed? Nope, okay, great. Phew, we got through that consent, here we go. Okay, we will now open up the board meeting for a public hearing regarding the 2023-2024 Texas Academic Performance, the TAPER report. And that is Ms. Steele, Ms. Steele. So I had the opportunity to meet Ms. Steele in the elevator when she was coming down for the first time. So she is replacing Denise Bells and is now going to be doing everything data and numbers and keeping us on track. So Ms. Steele, welcome.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Spicer and Board of Trustees. They gave me the clicker, so I click ahead, and there it is. So we're going to go ahead and review the Texas Academic Performance Report from 23-24, which includes lots of lagging data from even the prior year, just how it is presented. You have in your board brief, the, in your, the over, this is the overview, but you have the full details in your, linked for you. So for the 23-24, Waco ISD doesn't have any actual ratings pending litigation. So that's two years of litigation that we haven't seen any A-through-F ratings. But they did release the 24 Special Education Determination Status, which is needs intervention for our district, and so they're looking at several areas for our special education students, academic performance, post-secondary readiness, disproportionality. And so we place in that Level III Needs Intervention, and so we work through those processes. In terms of STAR performance, I have before you, our approaches are better. So included to this is any student that may, met approaches, meets, or masters level for reading, math, science, and social studies, and you can see the comparison between the district and the state here. Just let you kind of look at that. We will, in a couple slides, go over a comparison from the prior year to this year, so you can see the trajectory of those things. So these are our approaches level here. And this would be the meets level for those same subjects, reading, math, science, and social studies, STAR performance. So it does include grades three through eight, and then high school EOCs as well. So this is our meets and above district to state. And then our masters for all four core subjects as well, comparing our district and state for the 24 academic year. The next slide gives us, this is just reading and language arts, and it does give us the comparison from 23 to 24, so how we performed in Waco ISD and the state performed. And the trend is if the state increased, we increased proportionately. And if we, if the state decreased, we also decreased proportionally. So we kind of hung in to where we were relative to the state performance for those things. You can see at the masters, we increased, for an example, a percent, and the state increased as well, so in small increments.
Can I ask you a question about the-
Sure.
If a district is functioning optimally in all these categories, it seems to me, and this is my probably least educated ones boarding these areas, that the state numbers would grow by more than just one or two points every year. Like, 2023 to 2024, masters, two points, meets, one point. So my expectation in this is that we see, I mean, we have some significant catching up to do, but when we are in a healthy rhythm, I would anticipate more than one or two percentage points increasing every year. Is this considered healthy on the states? I mean, the state's growing at 1%, that doesn't seem very good for our state.
So I don't know if I have an answer to represent TEA in what they would consider healthy growth or not. We've seen over the last couple of years, many changes in our accountability system, in our, in the STAR assessment itself, how it scored, what types of questions. So I think in that transition over the next, you know, over the last couple of years, you know, 23 introduced, you know, new item types and different things on the STAR test. 24, any extended constructed responses that are embedded in almost every content area, or the short constructed, or, you know, all of those things are now being graded, like for English, you know, through a data assist, you know, through-
Yeah, and this isn't a critique, criticism at all on you, to me, go ahead.
Those changes have existed, and so I don't, until everything kind of is a little bit more stable and we see, we can see with no change a year or two-
No, no, I know, and I know that, I mean, as the 42nd ranked state in funding for education, and the TEA that seems to support all these changes happening so rapidly, this number to them should tell them it's not working, right? And that we need to increase our funding so that 1% is an acceptable statewide. I mean, that's kind of my point, is that they're the ones that changed all these rules and numbers and tests, and it's not working statewide.
I have a question also, kind of related, yet unrelated to this. When did we do, when did we transition to online testing? Was that this year, 2023, or was it 2022? Do you remember?
23-
24?
It was piloted two years ago, I thought.
I mean, we've been doing online testing, but when they went to, like, no more paper requests with very limited exceptions was really the 23, when they introduced the new item types and things that are not as compatible with paper testing, the drag and drops, like, you know, where kids have to maneuver thing-
Reading comprehension on the actual computer, not being able to highlight versus-
Like, little dropdowns where, like, you know, there may be a sentence, and they've got to pick the correct word, you know, they get a selection of words, and they've got to pick the correct word. There's different types of questions, not, no longer is it just multiple choice or just, you know, in maths, we call them gritables. I don't know if that's a common term, but, you know, the bubbled-in ones where you, you know, put your answer in. So there's a variety, you know, math has open-ended where they have to, like, write, you know, type in their answer. So there's all of those things, so that was introduced in the 23 testing, and so-
Okay.
Yep, in an effort to, it seems like in an effort to make grading easier, they've made the test more difficult to take. I mean, I'm just thinking from my own son's point of view, we had to practically hire a tutor just to show him all the tools he could use while taking a test. And that's just excluded from the test itself.
Yes, I mean, the state does have opportunities for kids to practice those things. I'm sure, you know, if you're getting somebody to come in, where, you know, we do it through interim testing and different opportunities that kids have in the classroom to practice. A lot of the programs we use incorporate those same things, so kids have some more consistency with that. And of course, as they, if you've got little ones, and it's the first time they're doing those tests, and it's really new, and, you know, once, but even older kids that haven't had to be exposed to that, it's new to them, right, as of 23. So I think as we utilize these features, I think it'll be more comfortable for students and maybe not seem like so out of space for them. But it is, it is all new for everybody, and that's across the state, and so that may be where some of those things are.
Yeah, and that's why I wanted you to say that, that was across the state, we wouldn't single it out, it was across the state.
Right.
Yeah, so let's move on.
But to answer that, like, seeing some stagnant things, getting comfortable with the testing, they, I mean, they did, you know, TEA has put out, they've changed the rigor of the questions. So that's where some of that comes from, too. I'm going to go ahead and, if we're okay, to move on to math. So we'll see a very similar experience in the, in the math, where, of course, in the state and district, we've, you know, see a slight decrease in all subjects.
Ms. Steele, do we know, is TEA continuing to ramp up? I know in years past, when they would make alterations to tax, to STAR, you know, they would, they would make, they would give a three-year ramp up, and then they would stay there for usually three to five years before they made alterations to the test. And I know that the test has been altered every year for the past, at least since COVID. So do you have a feeling from TEA that, that this is going to be where we can start getting a baseline on the test being similar and not being, being changed? Do you know what I'm saying, Dr. Spicer?
Um, so, a meeting I was in, I don't think this, this past summer, I know they are looking at the test and possibly making some changes again, especially with legislator, legislation session coming, because there's been concerns. So I don't foresee the consistency that you're talking about, but that's what we need. Because we don't know, it's like we're building the plane while we're flying it, right?
Right, and it's apples to oranges with the test-
Every time we-
Every year, when the test-
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And the forensic knowledge that, that our administration, that curriculum instruction, that your department-
Yes, sir.
Your team needs to know to be able to focus in when the ball, when the game keeps changing.
Yes, sir.
We're looking from last year to this year, it is apples and oranges, and that's not fair to our teachers-
Yes, sir.
Who are trying to fill in holes-
Yes, sir.
And not knowing. It's really frustrating, and I know it's frustrating for our teachers. But we really need to get some advocacy down in Austin on this.
Yeah, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to.
I will say, from 23 to 24, that the idea of the test didn't change, it was still the same formatting, but some of the grading, the way it was graded, and that was changed. And then we don't expect to see any changes this year necessarily, but as Dr. Spicer mentioned, you know, there's constant looking at the, reviewing the data and the tests and what that looks like. So I don't know that we will see a flat line for any extended period of time, so. Here is the, the science data for the district, so. Again, similar trends. And social studies. I will point out, this is a bright spot, looking at our approaches, so more of our kids making the approaches. We obviously want to see those increases in meets and masters for all of our subjects as well, but the state stayed stagnant at that 78%, and we saw a 3% gain. So we had some good things going on in social studies. So that's eighth grade and our US History EOC. Are we good? Yeah. All right. So we're going to get into some really lagging data, data that really is coming from 22-23 school year. And so this is our chronic absenteeism. So again, students that are enrolled at least 10 days but have been absent 10% of the days of their enrollment. So we do see a 10% decrease, which is a really good thing for Waco ISD from the 21-22 school year to the 22-23 school year. There are a lot of things in place on campuses, meetings to address these students that are absent, and how we can help support them and get them to school going on. And I think we see those efforts through, through this data. So the state's decreased about half of what we decreased, so that was a good thing to see there. Was that a- Okay, okay.
We, Dr. Edison stepped up and was, became kind of the attendance, and making sure that the attendance, you know, not being absent kind of was incentivized, and meeting with campuses, and trying to track down students. So we're just looking at that data, and that data could also be kind of evidence of, of his work on that specific issue, so, thank you.
So we see that as well, is in attendance, you know, our, our district had, you know, almost a 3% increase. We do see a small increase in the state as well, but more than doubled the state's increase there. So getting our kids into school, which is the first thing that needs to happen there through that. Dropout rates, so the students that left Waco ISD in the 22-23 school year. So you can see, we had a, in our seventh and eighth grade, so they start tracking those dropouts in seventh and eighth grade. These aren't necessarily kids that just didn't ever enroll in another school. They may just be students that, we don't have documentation, that they went somewhere else, they could have moved out of state in between a school year. They never re-enrolled with us. We spend through September looking for these students, but if we can't locate them, then they would end up on, on the dropout list, that's just kind of the way that works. But you can see we've decreased, and the state increased, and so we're kind of right, right where the state is this year. So hopefully, we can see that trend continue to decrease for, for us there. In our nine through 12, we did see a little bit of a, of an increase for those, for those grades. Graduation rates, so the state gives us a four-year graduation rate, so that's our class of 23, five-year. So if we recapture kids, meaning that they didn't graduate in the four years that, from when they enrolled in high school, but a fifth year or a sixth year, then, and we can identify that they graduated, then they would go in a five-year or six-year graduate, and we kind of keep looking at those kids through those six years. And so we see some increases. I know you don't see it here, but from the 22 class to the 23 class, we did have about 1.3% increase in that graduation rate, just from the four-year graduation rate. And again, this is all lagging data. So we have different diploma types for our students, and so they look at how are our students graduating? So there's a, the Foundation High School Plan, where they get 22 credits and can graduate through that plan. There's a diploma with endorsements, so there's different endorsements students can get if they've taken a cluster of specialized classes, STEM, multi-disc, humanities, public service, business and industry. And then our distinguished level, so they've got that endorsement, but they have also taken Algebra II sometime in, and been successful sometime in. So we'll look at kind of some of those diploma types. So 74.3% of our students graduated with the foundation with an endorsement at the distinguished level. So, which is an increase from the year prior. Being able to give those students those opportunities. I'll, I'll address the graduates with the CTEs in a, in a further slide, but well above the state there, so. And then this goes into our college career and military readiness, so graduating students that are prepared for life after they leave us in Waco ISD. So our students that graduated annually- So our students that graduated annually, um, with, they've either been prepared for college, for military, or for career and how they're accounting for them. So we can see we've had some increases, um, from twenty-two to twenty-three. A little over six percent. There isn't data for the twenty-one, twenty-two year for the college-ready and career-ready as, um, independent things, because they've changed how they're, um, giving the information for our, um, special education students that have an advanced diploma are now gonna be, um, associated with college-ready, where they were prior years were associated with career-ready. So they had to kind of move that, so we'll get to see those changes in the, in the future. Um, and this kind of breaks down the criteria for, um, being either college-ready or career-ready. So the T S I component, um, is students that have met the criteria on a, um, college-ready exam, whether it's S A T, A C T, or the T S I A two, um, test. And so our students that they can meet it for English, math, or, or both. And so those are kind of identified there. We made some pretty large gains in, in that math, um, success with those kids, um, in, in that area. They can also be identified as college-ready through A P exams, um, obtaining a associate's degree or dual credit coursework. And then, um, the career is really, um, over the industry-based certifications, um, those are continually changing. I know we, we talked about not being stagnant in the state, so they've changed some of those rules, and we'll kind of talk about that in the next slide. They've reintroduced, um, U S Armed Forces, so students, um, enlisting in the military, um, after graduation, um, and they'll can, so we've been able to collect that data for the twenty-three, twenty-four, and then they've actually gone into an agreement with, um, the D O D to be able to collect that information independently from us, so that'll be nice. And, um, and then our, um, students with special education services and how they're graduating, whether they're graduating, um, with their I A P being complete and, um, employability skills or workforce-ready, or the advanced diploma with their endorsement. So, um, the class of twenty-three had to take an I B C and pass an I B C to be considered, um, career-ready. That will continue to change. The class of twenty-four, um, had to have a Level Two in a program of study. And so, um, the C T E has lots of variety of programs of study, and, um, they're, they kind of worked in a tiered system where like the twenty-four had to have the Level Two course. Our twenty-five graduates that are graduating this year, in order to get credit for that career-ready, they have to have two courses in the same program of study. And then our twenty-six and beyond will need to have, um, four credits within the same program of study and pass their I B C, that industry-based certification. So we'll see those changes come along in the next couple of years. And then, but we had fifty-three percent of our twenty-three graduates were completers, meaning that they met beyond the, um, the state standard of just passing an I B C, but also having those programs of study and finishing their, their C T E pathway, where the state had thirty-one percent. Um, and then grades nine to twelve, eighty-one percent of our students are participating in some fashion through career technology education, which I think those are some really good things that we're doing to support students. So this is just kind of a profile of our, our students and staff here. So this is just our elementary enrollment, um, and you can see the changes from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And then our secondary. See that as well. Our ethnicity distribution, really, for the last, um, three years, is really been very similar, hasn't really changed, um, with our student groups, African-American and Hispanic being our largest populations, um, in there. But they've, they've pretty much been steady. Our, uh, just identifying our students by program, so through what, students that are being serviced through Gifted and Talented, our homeless program, dyslexia, uh, Section 504, at-risk, economically disadvantaged, and Title I.
What's the difference between at-risk and disadvantaged?
So our, the at-risk coding, um, is identified if a student is at risk of potentially not graduating. So they're looking at students that may have not been successful, there's a variety of things that, that.
That's not academic?
Uh, it's not just academic, there's a, there's a variety. There's a, there's a list of things, but, so they're looking at a, a variety of things, um, that, that come into play with that. One of the things I do want to point out is our students that have dyslexia services, we are seeing, um, an increase there due to new guidelines on testing and identifying those students. So we, we will continue to probably see some changes there.
How, um, this is probably for Dr. Spicer, um, or Special Ed. How, how long do we serve dyslexia? Do we serve that all the way? Is it to, until they exit the program? Or, I mean, can they be dyslexic and still be getting those services in high school?
Yeah.
Okay. 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 Okay, thank you.
We don't see the numbers quite change now, but to, to go with that, we've also had the changes where students that are served through dyslexia will also, they'll be served through special education, so we'll see that transition and probably see an increase in our, our special education numbers just, and that's new laws and, and guidelines that we have to follow, so.
It goes under the umbrella. Yeah, so Special Ed is gonna balloon.
Like, I, I can tell you personally, I had two children that had dyslexia services, and they just were through Section 504 and had their accommodations and had the supports that they needed. That is no longer, you know, how, how the system works anymore. And so, um, those students are expected to be served through special education. So we can see an increase in our emergent bilingual, um, population, as well as our students receiving, um, E S L services. And then you can just see our, a breakdown of our, um, primary disability types for our special education as well.
Another question, please. Can you, um, define students with non-categorical early childhood? Is that just the early childhood program? I, I don't know what, I'm not familiar with that.
I think that they haven't been identified with a specific learning disability at that point.
Is this pre-K?
Yeah. They, I think they're too young to be identified with a school. I'll, at special education, like specifically.
So our N C E C, which is non-categorical, categorical early childhood, it's for our three-to-five-year-olds. And we would evaluate them, they meet the criteria, but we're not quite sure, maybe they just need some early intervention. And so, um, by the time they're six, we have to reevaluate them, however, that is going away this year, and we're starting with a new eligibility, it's a developmental delay. And so that's something that we're moving into for next year.
How we, how do we identify them? How do you, uh, does a parent call you if they have a three-year-old who's, whose speech delayed or something like that? How, how does the district know how to identify those, those children?
So we work with Head Start, we work with E C I. Um, and then if a parent does have a concern or a doctor has a concern, they call us and we will evaluate them. We have a E C S C, Early Childhood Testing Center at North Waco, and so we have someone that, that's what they do. They evaluate, they have speech, maybe O T, P T, and then we determine if they meet eligibility or need that early intervention, and then we provide the service.
Is that funded through the federal government?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And then our, this was our twenty-three teacher demographics. And then twenty-four, not much change, um, in there, so very, very similar.
This is classroom teachers, not minister?
Correct. And then our teacher turnover, um, twenty-two, twenty-three, so we saw, um, a little decrease there. So retaining some teachers. The number is a little, um, it includes staff that may have moved to a different position within the district. So, um, if we have staff that's moving out of the classroom from a classroom teacher into another role, they're included in this, in this rate, so it's a little, um, maybe misleading at times, depending on those other things, but.
I know we're, we've got a lot to go, can you go back one slide? The bachelors? Does this include support staff at campus, or is it classroom teacher?
This is specifically teacher demographics.
Well, a quarter of our teachers don't have a bachelor's degree?
Well, twenty percent have a master's degree.
Oh, so they're not included in that?
No, no, I, I, yeah, I think it's their highest, highest level of education, so.
He was freaking out right now. We have bigger problems.
Ms. Steele, do we know, um, that's what I was gonna ask, do we know what percent of our, our teaching staff is emergency certified or alternatively certified?
I don't have that data here, um, I wouldn't, I.
She wouldn't have that, but we could get that, that's H R, and this is lag data, and so, you know.
It has teacher experience on the next slide, so.
I, I will point out, so the no degree, the two-point-three percent is probab- I'm gonna like make some assumptions, I know, they're horrible, but, you know, we have a lot of C T E teachers, and so they can be in the classroom certified. You know, if we had someone that'd been working in the nursing profession for, or welding profession.
Yeah.
And so they may not have a degree, but they, they have the mastery of their content. And so, so there's probably where most of that comes from, as opposed to, I think, what the initial concern was. And so, um, any, are we good on the teacher turnover? Okay. And then teacher experience, um, so this just is our, our teachers with the amount of experience they have compared to, um, the state. And so you can see our, our one-to-five teachers, um, is, is where we have a good, a good per, number of, of staff there.
So that, uh, one-to-five years experience, at one point in the district, it was like fifty, almost, almost over fifty percent, one-to-five years, new, new teachers. So that is, to see that a decrease, six-to-ten years experience, almost at about twenty percent. And then eleven to twenty-nine years, now, those are kind of the vets, the, so that's, that's kind of your bread and butter are those six to twenty-nine years and over, you know.
And I think a lot of that, um, Ms. Cordell Weg, is from, uh, teacher retention bonuses and new teacher sign-on bonuses.
Yes, oh, it's, it's new teacher sign-on with experience.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, I, I, I got to watch last year, and, uh, with Dr. Cornblum, we were at the base for the new teacher orientation, I believe. And I asked, how many of you are brand-new teachers? How many of you are one through five? And then I asked six to ten, and men, tons of hands. I think that program that we put in place helped. And I want to tag that on to everybody's.
Put a bug in their ear, mm-hmm. Yeah. The, um, yeah, I, I think, yeah, at one point it was like almost fifty, over fifty percent. And I think our district was struggling at that point to try to get any traction, so. Yeah, I do think the, having quality, experienced teachers. I know that the principals have done such a phenomenal job of actually recruiting really high-quality teachers. They've kind of told me they're going out and they're really trying to recruit hard from, um, everywhere with really great teachers. And I walked in and I thought this teacher, the second that I walked in, had my full attention, and I could have sat there for like thirty minutes. So really, uh, want to give kudos to the principals as well for, you know, using their networks to really try to, uh, get and recruit quality teachers, so.
That's all I have for you, any? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much, Ms. Steele, appreciate it. Okay, uh, that ends our public hearing. Moving on to item number nine, consider discussed, take appropriate action regarding the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five instructional calendar. Dr. Cornblum, I will say I liked this calendar. I really did. Huh?
What, what did you say, I'm sorry?
I really like this calendar.
Oh, good.
I went through and I compared it to the, my calendar, I was like, oh, okay, this one makes sense.
It works.
It works, yep.
Well, Calendar One and Calendar Two were very similar, um, but, um, Calendar One is kind of more reminiscent of the calendar we have this year. So, as you know, um, we present this to Q D A C, and we presented it to Q D A C for the first time in December. Um, they gave in, input, we took, well, when, when I started, we started creating them, I made two. And I was really having a hard time making a third, and so we took that to the leadership team. And we came up there with a calendar that looked very different, um, with a much later start date, which would have pushed us till after Memorial Day. That calendar was made really just thinking about the possibility of Waco High, you know, and that, that move in, although we're hoping that that's not a thing. So, um, took that back to, um, Q D A C, got their feedback, made changes, took it back to Q D A C again in January, um, got feedback, and then after that meeting, it went out for voting. So, um, does, does the memo come up, Mr., um, or maybe I have control? No. Well, you have the memo, you see that it meets all of the criteria, the seventy-five thousand, six hundred minutes, um, the holidays, the same holidays that we have traditionally gotten that are aligned to the universities and, um, colleges around us, um, so we tried to do that. Um, on this particular calendar, I think we have two point off of the top of my head, one, maybe, um, extra days for bad weather, um, and two early releases, so that, those are really kind of the high points of the calendar. Teachers still have planning days on this calendar. Calendar One and Two had planning, that was the thing with Calendar Three, it did not. So all in all, Calendar One, um, received four-hundred-and-fourteen votes. Calendar Two received two-hundred-and-forty-one, and Calendar Three received three-hundred-and-sixty-four. Altogether, we had eight-hundred-and-seventy-six staff votes and one-hundred-and-forty-three community votes with a total of one-thousand-and-nineteen votes altogether. So, um, when you put the community and the staff together, the Calendar One, obviously, which is the one that we're bringing forth, had the most votes. So we are asking you to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six, um, W I C instructional calendar as presented.
Okay, I will entertain a motion. Thank you, Mr. Grant, do I have a second? Ooh, give it to Mr. Davis. Um, do you, is there any discussion, Mr. Grant?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Davis?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Vedanya?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Gilley?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa?
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Two quick questions. One, uh, when we say planning days, do we, do we ever do workshops on those days? Are they truly planning days?
The principals are allotted ninety minutes, basically, to pull staff. Think of it, like if I wanted to go through some data with them from a recent assessment, because I wanted them to use their data for planning purposes. Or if I wanted to send my instructional specialist, instructional specialists could plan with them. But if I wanted them to meet with them just about data and then support them in planning. Or if they just needed to talk to them about something during that time. So for ninety minutes, they, you know, they get that amount of time, and then the rest of the day. And we've, we've been clear to you guys that that is, we want it to be for our teachers to plan. That said, the principals can structure that. principals can structure that as long as it's allotted to planning, and they can ask teachers to turn in an artifact at the end, completed units, some of the things that we talked about during, during our workshop. So, they can structure that time to ensure that that time is used wisely.
And my other question is probably more for Dr. Spicer. Have we talked at all about the possibility of changing up? I know you heard about it from the student groups, probably from a lot of teachers, about the start times? Yes. I know, I know we had to do it that way because of our, we had to go to the tier bus system, but I think now that we're...
Yes, it did.
Fully staffed or closer to fully staffed, we started having discussions. I know you'd make a lot of friends in this district.
Oh, my gosh, listen, I'm telling y'all, y'all are just like, listen, take all the hard topics, Spicer, do them now. But yes, the students did bring that up, especially my high school students, they let me know what time they wanted to start school, but also let them know that it's a domino effect. I also had some parent groups ask the same question, and I did explain, which I think our parents, I know we communicated it, but like just the fact that I was like, so, did y'all know that our transportation department was taken over by us, right? They did not know that. That's why we start early, because we have to do this many routes. So, I think we have some education to do, but it is something we can look at and consider, but like I told the students, it's a domino effect. If we do this for high school, this is what this means for middle school, this is what this means for elementary, because high school's like, you know, let the, let the little ones go first, we'll just sleep until nine, and you know what I mean? So, everybody wants a lot of different things, so however, we are going to listen and see, you know, if that's something that's feasible, but at the end of the day, we have to make sure our buses also can make the routes, get them there on time so that we can have school. So, we're talking about all of it, nothing's off the table. Hey, the kids are, oh, they are. They want to result yesterday, sir. Yeah, yes, we're always hiring bus drivers, let's say that for the audience, everybody, please share.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Mr. Patton?
Just want to make sure, we are, Dr. Cornblum, we are still banking extra minutes a day?
Yes. So, we have two extra, two extra days, the minutes equal two extra days right now on this calendar, the, the one that you're being asked to approve right now. We did not put, sometimes President's Day is used as a bad weather day, so if we needed to recapture another day, we could. It's not on there as a bad weather day, however, we could come back as a board and, and make that happen if we needed to, if we got into a bind.
Is that it, Mr. Patton? You have more questions? Okay. Great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passage now, and I love that Halloween is a, is a holiday. The teachers are probably rejoicing everywhere.
That was unanimous.
Yes. Halloween, I saw was a holiday, and I thought, way to go.
We need a federal, federal holiday for Super Bowl as well.
The, from the QDAC, from, then we shared it out then with principals, assistant principals, you know, different groups, and collectively, that was heard.
Yes.
The first person that tells a student, I mean, a, a, a classroom teacher, they're going to have to host a Halloween party only a day earlier?
Oh, yeah.
Should probably duck immediately after they make that suggestion.
Well, thank you so much, Dr. Cornblum, for your great work, we appreciate it.
Ms. Cordell Weg, may I make a comment, just, just not related to what we just talked about. Dr. Cornblum, I just want to publicly say, when I pulled the consent item, I appreciate you stepping up and answering questions cold, not knowing where I was coming from. I appreciate your candor, and I appreciate your expertise, so thank you.
Okay, let's go on to everyone's favorite topic, audits. Ms. Davis? It's very good information, it's very good information, I do, yes.
Good news.
Very thorough, I will say that, very thorough as well, so thank you for that.
Yes, so we, our auditor, Mr. John DeBorrow from Weaver, is here tonight to do a brief presentation, brief presentation on the results of the audit.
Great, welcome.
Thanks, Cheryl. I got the hint with the, the brief presentation. I want to thank you, Dr. Spicer, and members of the board for allowing me to meet with you this evening to present the results of the fiscal year 2024 audit. As Cheryl mentioned, I'm John DeBorrow, I was the audit partner, and I like to bring some good news to this meeting, going through the audit results with you, and I'll try, I know you had a lot on your agenda this evening, so I'll try to go through this as quickly as possible, but if you have any questions, please let me know. I served as the audit partner and Stephen Smith as the audit manager, and just to give you a little bit of context, we, we started planning our, our meeting la-, I mean, planning our audit last spring. We did interim field work in July where we look at mostly internal controls since the fiscal year's not closed yet. Then, when we come back out in November, we perform the brunt of our, our testing, and we issued our opinion on the district's financial statements, which I won't do a spoiler yet, but we'll get to that in just a minute. We have to, we have to perform our audit in accordance with several standards, generally accepted auditing standards and generally accepted government auditing standards, and then we also perform a single audit, which is called a single audit, of the district's federal financial assistance programs, and we also perform compliance of the district with various things such as the TEA state compliance requirements and the Public Funds Investment Act. And we utilize a risk-based approach, as most firms do, and this is just because obviously we can't audit every transaction of the district, so we look at areas that could be of higher risk and, and tailor our resources more heavily in those areas, things such as improper revenue recognition, especially with the state foundation funding, misappropriation of, of cash receipts and things, these are considered specific risks of all districts and cities and such, and we have to look at the controls over those areas, and, which we did, and we felt that the controls were strong and didn't represent any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Some of the more significant areas that we test are federal and state grant revenues and expenditures, state foundation program revenues and related estimates, construction projects, and various payables. And then, as I mentioned, when we came during the spring, we wa-, we look at the internal controls and get an understanding of the processes, and then we walk through transactions to make sure that the controls are in place and operating as designed. And when we were here during the spring, we started our single audit testing, and there were two major programs this year that had to be tested as part of the federal single audit. One of them was the Title I program and the child nutrition cluster this year. We also performed testing of the district's capital projects that are going on, including bid testing, procurement testing, tests of controls over cash disbursements and payroll. And what you've been waiting for, the results. That's how we did, John. We've issued several reports in conjunction with this year's audit. The first is our independent auditors' report on the district's financial statements, and I'm happy to report that we've issued an unmodified or a clean opinion, which means that we feel that the district financial statements were in a wooden swiff gap. We've issued our independent auditors' report on internal control of our financial reporting and on compliance, and I'm happy to report that there were no instances of any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls, and no instances of any material non-compliance. And the final report that we've issued is the one that's specific to the single audit for the federal financial assistance programs, and on that report, we've issued another unmodified opinion or clean opinion, which just means that we feel that the district complied with all the compliance requirements of the major programs that we tested, the Title I program and the child nutrition program, and that there were no findings. So, good news all the way around. I won't go through all the details of our required communication, they are here on the slide as well as on the letter that was included in with the audit, audited financial statements, but just some of the, the higher things that we have to communicate. We have to communicate whether there were any significant audit adjustments that had to be made as a result of our audit procedures to arrive at the numbers in the final financial statements, and I'm happy to report that there were none. So, congratulations to Cheryl and her staff for another stellar job. There was only one passed adjustment, which we both felt was immaterial to the financial statements, just regarding the, the placement of the arbitrage liability with regards to the bonds. Some of the other areas of communication are, are significant estimates. The largest estimate in, that's embodied in the district's financial statements is the state foundation revenue, because it truly is an estimate, it changes throughout the year and even after the, the audit is over. There were no difficulties in QDAC in the audit, we received everything in a timely manner that we needed to, to conduct our audit, and no disagreements over application of accounting principles or anything like that. And then I finally want to share with you a few financial highlights. These numbers come from both this year's financial statements as well, as well as the previous fiscal year. I like to start with the district's governmental revenues, which totaled $249.8 million, and that was a $1.2 million increase over the previous year, so pretty, pretty flat with the prior year, and it really was the net effect of a few things going on. The local revenues decreased by $15.8 million. That was mostly the property taxes, and a lot of that had to do with the increase in the homestead exemptions. Federal revenues decreased $9.2 million, as we saw that the ESER programs coming to an end, and state revenues increased by $26.2 million. And this just shows you a side-by-side comparison of those three sources of revenue over the past three years, and you can see the local revenues decreasing by $15.8 million, state program revenue increasing by $26.2, and the federal program revenues decreasing by $9.2. Similar presentation with regards to the governmental expenditures of the district, which totaled $379.5 million. That was a $23.9 million increase over the previous year, but most of this was attributed to the $27.9 million increase in construction. With all the, the construction going on in the district, that was really the, the only significant increase. As you can see here, this slide shows you the various functional areas of expenditures, and the only one that really increased was, was that, and that's because of the timing of the construction, really. Fund balances for the district as of August 31st were $188.7 million, the majority of that, or $111.2 million is in the capital projects fund, who, that was bond money that was issued in previous years. The overall governmental fund balance decreased by $129 million, but again, it, it's all because of the timing of the construction versus the issuance of the bonds. The bonds were issued in the previous year, you're spending down those, those funds this year, so the fund balance goes down. Unassigned fund balance in the general fund was $60.9 million, and that represents 39.3% of general fund expenditures, which is considered a very healthy amount. Finally, this slide shows a budgetary comparison schedule for the general fund for fiscal year 2024, and overall, it was a favorable budgetary variance of $16.7 million, and that's really comprised of a couple of things. The revenues were over budget by $1.4 million, and expenditures were under budget by $15.1. So, overall, very good audit, and again, thanks to Cheryl and her staff for, for doing a great job. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I just have a comment. This district is obviously not without its challenges, but I just want to say thank you to Cheryl for, for making this not one of them.
Absolutely.
It could be, it could be a mechanic force.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Ms. Davis.
Can I ask a question relating to this slide in particular? We had a projected deficit in this slide of revenue and expenses, and it looks like we ended up with 7,000 less in expenses than revenues, is that correct? The actual revenues over expenses? Oh, I mean, a million, I'm sorry. The 161 revenue, the actual versus the 154 expense? That, that's my question is, was that, I know that we changed the budget quite a bit to get as low as we could, but we still had an unknown number there. Did, did we just not spend money that we had budgeted to spend, or how did, because I was prepared to have a fund balance decrease greater than, greater than that? Do we anticipate this next year's cliff that we've talked about being less steep or tall because we've moved stuff into this year, or will it affect it at all for next year's numbers?
Okay, so, we adopted a budget with about an $8 million deficit.
Right.
I would expect that we would underspend that by, say, half, about $3 to $4 million anyway, typically. We have now amended in the $2 million that was left in projects from last year, which included the hail damage, the roofing projects and all, and open purchase orders we had. We had ordered a lot of buses, we had about a million dollars worth. The, the main things were, it's the million dollars in the hail project, damage, and then a million dollars in buses that we rolled forward because the buses had not come in as of the end of August. So, those two things, the buses, some of those buses have arrived, not all of them, but that million dollars will definitely hit this year. It would be on top of that eight million we had budgeted as a deficit. If we get the roofs and all done, that will be too. So, we should, but again, I think we'll, we typically underspend, you know, three to four million dollars, I would expect that. We are also, tonight, we amended in some projects because part of what didn't get spent in ESER was some projects for maintenance that never did get allocated, so that was part of the $2 million we amended in tonight is going to the maintenance department to help cover some projects that they need to do. That said...
We rolled a few things over that will increase the deficit for next year, but we're going to still... we're going to still underspend it.
Underspend.
Yeah.
Now, I still haven't, we have had some issues with trying to project student attendance this year because of TEA's new, uh, system for reporting teams, but, um, I'm getting ready to tackle that. We know we are down a few, some more students than what I had projected, much closer, only with, in about 60 this year, but we'll still lose a little bit of money there. I think, um, overall, you know, I'm hoping it ends up at, you know, maybe a $4 million deficit in the current year. We have a very healthy fund balance, as John said, of 65 million.
We've got to get, we've got to stay above 20%, is that right?
Under our policy, yes.
Board policy.
And we're 39 right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Cheryl keeps us in good shape.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, you know, we have been, I, I think the other thing that I do, I'm a little concerned about, when we had all that ESER money, we had left a lot of things like, we left a lot of things on the table in the general fund that didn't get spent, because we were trying to spend the ESER money first, so we no longer have that money. We are using that money for tutoring and all sorts of things that we now no longer have. So, I think we'll see a little bit less of an under expenditure
Sure.
Than we have been, but
Thank you.
So, Ms. Davis, you're, if I heard you correctly, we're looking at a $4 million-ish deficit for next year?
Well, that's right now.
Okay.
Because I have not, uh, really started, it's just, you know, we just ended, closed books on December. I usually start my first real expenditure projections after January closes, because we start getting to that second semester of positions filled and all. So, um, I will, we're probably do a presentation, we usually do our first one, to kind of catch up on where we ended and where it looks like we're going to do, maybe in this year, and what legislature, legislation is looking like.
Right.
Good or bad, and, um, anyway, so we'll probably start that in February or March timeframe.
Thank you for your work.
She knows her numbers.
She does. Any other questions for Mr. DeBorough? Okay, you know what, you did, you kept it brief. Thank you so much, and very clear and concise, so thank you, that is
Thank you so much.
A definite art, we appreciate it, thank you. Um, okay, moving on to item number 11, announcements, Ms. Cox.
Good evening, President Cordowig, Dr. Spicer, trustees. I have to say, these nameplate thank you cards, bright colors are a lot of fun. Um, thank you to all of our campuses, those heavy gift bags are from all across the district, all across our departments, as along with these signs. We may have to think about leaving them up a little longer, they make it, they bright and cheery. Happy New Year, and welcome to the 89th Texas Legislative Session. I know we've already talked a little bit about it, you're going to be hearing more later, but we're in it. Um, filing is underway statewide for the May 3rd general election, and it ends on February 14th. We have more information on our website at wacoisc.org/elections. Go check it out. Um, the competition is heating up for the annual Waco ISD Education Foundation HEB Celebrity Cookoff on Friday, January 31st, that's next Friday. I know I'm standing in front of three of the 26 chef teams that will be competing. Um, individual tickets are still available to enjoy the taste of this special event that directly impacts innovative instruction and student scholarships in Waco ISD. I'm not taking bets on who's going to win, but I can't wait to taste it, so. The next day, we hope to see you and many of our students and families at, at the, oh, yeah, Coach Love, put pressure on him, he's a judge too.
He is a judge.
Pressure can go that way. The next day, we hope to see you and many of our students and families at the Centex Teen Book Fest on the Brazos, that's Saturday, February 1st. Waco ISD is again partnered with LitWaco to host a fun and exciting literacy family engagement event. This year, it will be at Tennessean Middle School, um, from 9:30 to 3:00. Thank you to federal programs, Courtney Parnell, I see you over there, um, Nutrition Services and Transportation for their efforts to support this event, provide meals and offer giveaways for attendees. The following Saturday, students from across the district will be competing in our annual elementary and middle school UIL competition at UHS. It is a full day of educational fun and competition on Saturday, February 8th. Thank you to our teachers, administrators, parents, and community members, and Education Foundation Board members, and all the like that come to judge, um, and support this really special event that brings together, um, campuses from across the district. That's what I have for you.
Did, did you mention tomorrow is also the Chili Cookoff at Tennessean Middle School?
I, I
At 5:30.
Would you like to share more?
At 5:30. I know I'm judging, and I think Jose might be, and
If I understand correctly, Wendy, correct me if I'm wrong, it's, it, that's a special event that campus holds to benefit the library or the library club?
I think that sounds exactly right.
Yes, yes.
Yep. It was a lot of fun last year, a lot of fun.
Not a lot of heartburn, right? Like, it was just
Lots of heartburn, lots of fun, lots of heartburn.
Yeah. Anything else that I, it, it's a busy time.
Coach, Saturday, is it Andrew Billy?
And that's at University, because I think at Waco High, we have ROTC Drill Meet, there's 30 schools for the drill meet? I'm going to repeat, with 30 schools participating from across the region, yep, central Texas.
And then, uh, Mr. Vedanya told me, uh, January 28th?
28th, University versus Colleen Ellison?
Basketball.
Basketball, it's, I mean, I think we, we haven't beat them in a couple, maybe five in a row, I mean, they're a good team, but
That's boy, boys' basketball, correct?
It's boys' basketball.
It'll be a fun game.
Oh, that'll be a good game.
We are, we are definitely in the winter sports with soccer and basketball and lots of great, exciting things. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cox, lots of good stuff happening. Okay, the board is going to go into closed session at 8:06. Uh, this time pursuant of the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code 551, Sections Point 072 and Point 071, no action will be taken when we reconvene.
Call this meeting closed at 9:33 PM.